I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Here we have a roll call, please.
Mr. Person?
Here.
Mr. Prince?
Here.
Ms. Brier?
Here.
Mr. Bravoni?
Here.
Mr. Taylor?
Here.
Mr. Corman?
Ms. Palmer?
Here.
Roll call, Mr. Mayor, one absent.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Person.
I move Councilman Corman be excused.
Second.
The move by Mr. Person, seconded by Mr. Prince, that council excuse Councilmember Corman. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
A pause, the ayes have it. So, to start off this evening, we have a special presentation from our friends from the Renton Youth Advocacy Center. Harry.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Council President, Council Members. I'm Terry Higashi-Om, the Community Services Administrator, and we are fortunate enough to be able to work with our Renton Youth Advocacy Center up at Tiffany Park, and they are here tonight to sort of bring you up to speed in all the things they've been working on and the things they have planned for the future, so I'm going to turn it over to them, and they have some of their board members here also.
Okay, thank you.
Good evening, where's the microphone here? Good evening, Mayor and City Council Members, thank you for having us back. My name is John Houston, I'm Director of Renton Youth Advocacy Center, Terry says it better than I do, I just sing R-Y-A-C. Thank you for having us back. We're here to, you know, let you know some of the accomplishments that we've, you know, that we've achieved over the last eight months. We were here in September, I believe, and we promised that we'd be back to let you know how things were going. I want to thank the City of Renton and the Renton Police Department for their continued support. Without you guys, I understand the chief here, without you guys, Sergeant Skelton, without you guys' support, we wouldn't be open, so thank you again for that. You know, our vision remains the same. We are there to empower youth, the youth in the City of Renton, and sometimes Kent, we're, they're neighbors to the South, and we welcome them also, but through community service, community activities, projects, we've surprised ourselves. We're only open two days a week, Tuesdays and Thursdays, three to seven, and the maximum that we had in there, I think, is thirty-two, thirty-three kids in one evening, so we really surprised ourselves. Some of the things that we've done, we've held, had a blanket project where we, some of the kids made blankets and donated them downstairs at the Hope Center. We've, we have a, what else have we done? Lots of stuff. But anyways, we've done a lot of stuff in the community with the kids. We're gonna go to a Mariners game, a construction company from Bellevue donated twenty tickets for, to take the kids to a Mariners game, so we're gonna do that. We're involved with, we're gonna be open in the summer, five days a week, and we've been working with Terry and Christine on the summer lunch program, so we're gonna do that, where there's lunches delivered to the park, and the building will be open for activities for the kids after that, so. A lot of stuff, a lot of, we're volunteer, we're completely volunteers, and we're funded by private donations, and we're always looking for volunteers and donations, so come up and see us, I know several of you have been up to see us, come up and see what we're doing up there on the hill. The kids are, we have a core group of kids that are there every day, kids that depend on that building being open now, and we're gonna fight to keep it open. We're gonna get out, if we have to wash cars or sell apples, we're gonna do that to keep the door open, because those kids need a place to go after school. Debbie Leroy is, she writes grants for us, she recently retired from the City of Kent, but she's gonna take you through a presentation, a PowerPoint presentation of some of our activities. Thank you again.
Thank you, John.
Good evening, Mayor Law and Council Members. As John stated, the Renton Youth Advocacy Center really appreciates all of your support that's helped us open our doors last September. As I go through this slide presentation, I'm gonna be referring to Renton Youth Advocacy Center as R-Y-A-C, 'cause I don't talk very fast. So, our mission, as John said, is to help create a community where at-risk youth are accepted, nurtured, and guided to be thriving, active, and engaged members of society. Our program goal is to offer a safe place for youth, where there's supportive adults and even older youth that are there to help empower them to make the positive changes later in their life, now and later in their life. So our current status, as John mentioned, we're open on Tuesdays and Thursdays, right after school, from 3:00 to 7:00 p.m. As of the end of April, we had one-hundred-and-sixty-six different students that attended the R-Y-A-C, and we average anywhere from twenty-five to thirty students dropping into our center on the days that we're open. As John also said, we are a volunteer-based organization, and we offer our services at no cost to the youth and their families. And we operate through donations and fundraisers, and all the money that we receive goes directly into the center. John talked about the blanket project, and I just wanted to mention that it was the Renton Lions that provided the materials, so we could create those blankets and include the youth in this project, and then donate them to the Reach Center of Hope. One other thing I wanted to mention, too, is last fall, we ran a food drive in partnership with the Tiffany Park Neighborhood Association, and also, we had a coat drive and partnered with local churches, so those coats went out to the homeless. Our current needs and goals, we need to raise funds for sustainability and future planning, we need to increase our local community awareness, and we also need to continue to build R-Y-A-C's Board of Volunteers. I came into this project almost a year and a half ago, but many of the volunteers have been working with John for about the last three years, and I call this group an enterprising group of volunteers, because they know how to reach out in their networks and find the resources that help us keep the center open for these kids and their families. What we want to see in the next five years is, we want to develop strong community support and relationships. We also will have established funding sources for sustainability and program expansion, and we will be providing consistent and reliable and ongoing mentorship programs. One way that we're going to carry us on and sustain our effort is, we've developed two main ideas for fundraising, and one of them is to form a funding committee within our Volunteer Board of Directors, and this committee will focus on community outreach efforts, fundraiser planning and development, and grant funding. We have also scheduled our benefit dinner in October 2014, and we plan to attract somewhere around three-hundred Renton citizens, community leaders, and business owners, and we are looking for an after-dinner keynote speaker. We are also in the process of gathering items for a raffle and an auction event. So, we invite you to check us out, and there are several different ways that you can. You can just simply visit our website at rentonyac.org, or join us on Facebook at R-Y-A-C for Youth, and all of you, including the audience, are welcome to come and visit us while, when we're open, on Tuesdays or Thursday nights, from 3:00 to 7:00 p.m., to see what we're doing with the youth. And then also, this is very timely, we are having our first spring jam up at the center this Saturday, May tenth, from 3:00 to 5:00 p.m., and we have several of the students that visit our center that are going to be sharing their talents, and then we will also be featuring the debut group from the Renton Youth Symphony Orchestra. We will have some food and refreshments as well, so you're all welcome to come and see what we're about. So again, we'd just like to thank the City of Renton for the partnership that we're forming, and all of the resources that the different departments are providing to our center. Thank you.
Thank you. Well, you know, we also want to thank, I mean, your entire board, and John, and the efforts that you've been putting into this. It was pretty easy for us to get attracted to it in the beginning, because we have a police officer and a firefighter that both serve on your board, and then, of course, we've got Sergeant Skelton sitting right back there, who's a huge advocate of everything that John does and the youth group, so we're very pleased to be able to work with you on it, and, you know, you're doing great work, so, thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Mr. Taylor? Could you have your board stand up? They're blending in with the audience.
Yes.
I think people would like to see who they are.
Board members.
And also, I have a question. What is the typical profile of the youth? And that would include age, whether or not they come from a single-parent home, or two working parents? What's the typical profile of your youth?
Well, it's quite an array, I'll tell you. When we first opened, our target population was middle and high school students, but we soon started seeing these younger elementary students that wanted to come into our center, and lo and behold, they were younger siblings of the middle and high school students that were coming. And so, our board decided to welcome them all, and yes, we have single-parent families, we have a family that's homeless, that really rely on having our center there to be able to interact with other adults, with adults and then other youth. It's just really, it really is, the youth that come to our center are as diverse as our community, and it's just a great thing. I enjoy being there.
And I was gonna ask you a question. What would it take for you to open, be open five days a week? And I saw that in, later in your PowerPoint, that you're looking to get some more sustainable funding to assist you, but what could somebody, you know, who might be viewing right now, the public, what could they do to assist your efforts right now?
Come and sign up as a volunteer. Yeah, we do have PayPal, but we also, you know, we could use some more, Don, he's the director. But no, we really do value our volunteer staff, and they bring such a wide array of experience that they can share with the kids. You know, some of them are paraeducators, so they can help tutor, some of them are business owners, they can help in a lot of different ways. We also have a lot of grandparents, and they know how to take care of teenagers. So, yeah, we just, we welcome anybody to volunteer, or if you'd like to donate, our website makes it really easy for you.
Right, and you did mention that there was a generous business owner who donated twenty Mariner tickets, so any kind of donations that could engage the kids in some kind of activities could be useful as well?
Yes, definitely, and we will recognize you all through our social media.
Great.
There's one more. Since we've been there, there's been a couple, it's not our, it's not kids, it's younger adults. We've kind of cleaned up the park a little bit, too. I don't have any problems with chasing somebody out of the park if I know they're in there doing illegal things, and the Renton Police Department has been right there to support us on that. We've had to clear a couple adults from the restroom, so, and they haven't been around lately.
That's correct.
I was talking to Sergeant Skelton last week, and we were talking about, have this certain guy been around? He hasn't. I probably shouldn't have did that, but I escorted him from the property, he was, the kids were afraid of him, and he made it be known that he wasn't afraid, and jail doesn't mean anything to him, so, but he hasn't been back around, so. We're not only helping the kids, we're helping in the community also. It's a safe park to go to.
One thing about where there's a population of people occupying the space, is it does create more safety, especially with people like yourself and the board members that you've got that are from our fire department and also the police department, that really has a nice, nice solid foundation around it. So, thank you for everything you guys are doing.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Thanks, John, for coming.
Yes, thank you.
Next is the administrative report, and before Mr. Covington gives you a brief update on some items, I was gonna ask Greg Zimmerman to come forward and give you a little update on the slide that we experienced on the Maple Valley Highway.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Members of the council, I've got a brief PowerPoint presentation I'll make, and show you some photos of the slide that took place. It wasn't a large slide, but it did need, oh, there it is, it did need some attention. So, as you know, Maple Valley Highway, State Route 169, did have some modest slides that occurred. We have just emerged from the most rainy, wettest March on record, and the slopes, in many cases throughout the city, still retain a lot of that moisture, and so over the weekend, we had over two inches more rain. It got pretty intense for a while, and we had some limited mudslides that happened along the Maple Valley Highway. As I mentioned, there was two inches of rain over the weekend. The most intense period was Saturday night, from between ten and midnight. Two-thirds of an inch of rain fell during those two hours, and that probably led to some of the issues that we dealt with on Sunday. As a comparison, that wasn't anywhere close to our twenty-five-year design storm, where over a half-inch falls in one hour, as a way of comparison, but it was still a pretty intense rainfall event for certain periods of time. This is a slide that I presented back on April fourteenth to the Committee of the Whole, when we went through some of the steep slope areas in the city that we're taking a look at geotechnically, to make sure that we have assurance that the slopes are holding up, and this is the slide showing the length of the Maple Valley Highway through Renton, and we are still intending putting the scope together for a geotechnical survey along the slope, to assess the safety of the slope and to see if there's any remedial actions we need to take. A closer, a close-up of that slide shows the location roughly where these slides occurred over the weekend. I'm gonna show you with the pointer, about, it was about in this vicinity along Maple Valley Highway, fairly close to the entrances of the Riviera Apartments, and the slide itself, both slides, they were relatively small. The reason we had to close down State Route 169 was because trees fell across the street. There wasn't any mud that got to the street, although some mud did come down the hillside and had to be removed from the drainage ditch. This is also one of the slides I showed, fortunately, I guess, back on April fourteenth, because this is the exact location where the trees that you see in this little slide area that I'm pointing to with the pointer here, there was a little bit more slippage on Saturday, and those small trees were leaning out over the road. The police department brought this to our attention on Saturday, which resulted in a fairly short closure of Maple Valley Highway, while our street crew came out and used a saw and cut those trees out of the way, and the road was opened again pretty quickly on Saturday. The longer of the two closures, of course, happened the next day, on Sunday. This is a photo of what happened on Sunday that caused the street closure. There was another small slide about a couple hundred feet away from where I showed you that last photograph, and as you can see, none of the mud from that slide off the hill entered the street, but a mid-sized tree, about ten-inch diameter trunk, did fall across and close a couple of lanes of Maple Valley Highway. So, that happened about nine in the morning. We, with the participation of the police department and the sign shop, closed off the street for a section and put up a detour route really quickly, and the street crew came out and cut away the tree and started cleaning out the gutter along the edge of the road to make sure the water flowed. But in addition to that, right in the slide area, this is a photo of about a hundred-foot-tall cottonwood tree that was standing, as you can see, right next to the road, and the concern was that this was right at the toe of that slide, and it was leaning slightly over Maple Valley Highway, and we came to the collective decision that we really needed to do something about it. Cottonwoods aren't known for their stability anyway, and it was leaning. If you look way up here, about halfway up where I'm pointing, this is a representative up in the tree of J.B. Tree Service, who came out on an emergency call, and they do some of the tree removal for our maintenance shops. They sent a group, a group of workers out, one of whom climbed up the tree and started chopping off pieces bit by bit while we kept the street closed. Whoops, let me go back. This is a close-up of the individual that did that. You can see the size of this trunk. It's a very large tree, if you get close to it, and once again, it was a cottonwood, so we thought that it had to come down. This shows the progress of cutting down the tree. It was cut down in sections, and the pieces then fell down into the street and alongside the street. And this is a slide, our street crew worked in collaboration with the J.B. Tree Removal and removed pieces of the tree. We had our chipper out there, and we're chipping up the branches as well. The operation took about seven hours altogether, and by about four o'clock in the afternoon, we had the street open again. Really, in a way, it was fortunate it happened on Sunday, because the traffic was relatively limited, and people that were using the street really were doing a good job of obeying our detour, so we didn't have much of a problem that way. So, just in conclusion, we're still going to be doing a geotechnical study of that slope. We're putting together the scope of it now. The slide was not a very large slide, but it is a continuing indication that, from time to time, we have parts of the hillside that are unsteady and come down and cause blockages, and as in this case, sometimes trees are the biggest problem. So, we need to do a geotechnical reconnaissance of that. We're putting the scope together, and we're talking to the other property owners that own pieces of the property higher up the slope, and they've been very interested and cooperative, and we're going to be looking at those slopes as well, and getting a study and some recommendations on the condition of the slope and maybe some remedial actions we can take. So, if there's any questions?
Any questions from council?
I'd just like to comment that, as usual, our street crew is out there doing a great job, and most likely saved a lot of damage and injury to people by getting those trees out of there, so, thank you.
Thank you very much. We had great support from the police department as well. They were out there the whole time, helping direct traffic, and it was really, from my perspective, a very smooth interdepartmental operation.
Surprising how they obeyed the detour when the police are there.
It helps.
That helps.
That helps. Thank you, Greg.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Covington? Yes, Mr. Mayor, council, a couple of items. You received an administrative report in your packet with several items. I wanted to just highlight one item, and then had one additional one to respond to. The Second Annual Youth Education Safety Fair will be held this Saturday at the Renton Community Center. From 11:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m., the whole family is invited to attend and have fun while learning what safety resources are available. There will be child ID kits, safety tips, fire safety trailer, face painting for the kids, CPR instruction, police and fire demonstrations of their apparatus, and some drawings, and as Kelly Beamer would say, fabulous prizes. I wanted to also just mention one other thing. We had some comments last week during the audience comment regarding the city's budget, and just so that there's not confusion with the audience, I wanted to just respond a little bit about that. The principles of the city's budget are very similar to the same budgeting principles that we all have in our home budgets. We have, a budget is simply a financial plan. The principle ought to be that we live within our means, and the city certainly takes that to heart. We use credit or debt very, very prudently, but most importantly, we try to plan ahead. That's the whole idea behind a household budget, that's the same idea and principle behind a city's budget. And if you know your financial picture might change, then you can plan for it, and that is certainly what we try to do with the city. There are circumstances, sometimes, when external forces can come in and can impact your financial plan that you haven't anticipated. You, in your personal budget, can get, you can have a job loss or a job change, or something else might happen that could impact that you have no control over. In the city's case, the last several years, we certainly had an outside impact. It was titled "The Great Recession." In the budget process that was mentioned last week, during 2012, we were planning for the 2013-14 budget. We were just beginning to finally come out of the throes of that Great Recession, but still feeling the impacts. And so what we presented to the council was a plan to address what was clearly still the impacts of the recession, and so we anticipated that without implementing some of those plans, we would end up with a deficit. As the article continued, while Ms. Peterson last week mentioned the headline in the first paragraph, the, later on in the article, it actually mentioned that the administration presented a number of options and alternatives for the council to consider, and some solutions to that, which ultimately the council adopted, and so the city ended up with a balanced $457 million two-year budget we're still living in into this year. There was another article that was mentioned regarding some comments that our fire chief made in the fall of 2013 regarding the 2014 budget, and again, using the principles that I just mentioned, he was looking ahead and identifying that there could be some impacts to his 14 budget if he didn't stay on top of those and exercise good caution, which he has done. So here we are, almost to halfway through the 2014 budget. The fire department budget is living within its means, as we would expect it to do, just as you, as a homeowner, have to do in your own budget. And finally, there was an article mentioned about our recent discussion with the council regarding our projected budget situation in 2018, and I had mentioned specifically a couple of weeks ago that if we took no action, we could face an $8 million deficit by 2018. Emphasis on taking no action. That is certainly not something the city will do. We will absolutely take action. The whole idea of presenting the council some ideas and options four years before 2018 is so that we can get ahead and plan ahead. That's the principle behind budgeting, that's what we do, and we do win awards for our budgeting because of the fact that we pay attention to these things. We, by law, have to adopt a balanced budget, we do that. I'm very, very proud of our finance staff. I will say unequivocally, I think we have the best finance director in the state. She is well-known and well-regarded. This council certainly acts prudently and responsibly. They do not spend money unless they're aware of how it'll be covered in terms of the expense side of the budget, and in my 24 years here, I'm proud to say that I think this mayor and this council have acted as responsible as any elected officials around, and so I just want to make sure that the public understands, the city's budget is in good hands with these elected officials. That's all, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Mr. Covington. Moving on to audience comment, we have two people signed up to address the council. When I call your name, please come to the podium, give your name and city residence for the record, and you have five minutes. Howard McComber.
Howard McComber, I live in the Renton Highlands. We had a presentation before this with the Committee of the Whole, having to do with homelessness. We have a lot of areas in our city where we need help and we need to work with each other. All of you that I see are concerned about that and help. The thing is to keep our minds open and to look at all sorts of things, think out of the box sometimes. Maybe, I know we're talking about looking at California and some of those things, but you know, really, I think the best imagination's here, and the best idea to solve our problems are right here. And we have problems that need to be solved, and I think that we need to take a look at how to make it life easier and better for people who are in trouble, who are in definite need. I think we have to have compassion. I think that anything moving in that direction is good. We don't make huge changes overnight, but we need to have a constant direction at improving the situations that we're in. So, I think three things. Number one, I think that the support that you've been giving to people like Reach, like Center of Hope, like John's group, is great. I think even more. I think even more can be given. I think John's Group is good. I think it needs more support from everybody, including you and including me. Same thing with Reach. Reach is expanding. Talking about October, you may want to put October 2nd off on your calendar, because Reach is going to be having a gala event. You'll all get invitations for the same reason, because we're all looking for ways to run a sustainable, continued benefit for the people. And I think the ideas are going to come a lot from these folks. There are going to be wonderful ideas, which maybe you haven't thought of, that will help in the areas where we have needs. We have some great things going on in the city. I was down checking with the building department, and they're just stacked. The building looks like 2006 again. We won't have the same banking snafu, so it should be good. But things are going very well, except we don't have enough housing going on on the bottom end. Not enough new houses for people in the median income and down. You've never heard of that before, have you? Anyway, we need to work at getting more housing available. And I think we need to look at maybe some bold moves about making situations so that the homeless are not in such trouble. I noticed that in those pictures, a lot of those homeless were hiding. They were hiding out in the trees. They were trying not to be, they were trying not to be a problem. One of the problems we have in our shelters is that the shelters aren't enough. There aren't enough places. So the last people to come to the shelter, and that's a big line, by the way, they come to the shelter and they say, "I'm sorry, we're out of space." And the people ask two questions. They say, "Where can I go that's safe where I won't get in trouble?" And we need to work at solutions for that that really count. I think we need to have spaces where people can put their stuff that's safe. I think that would not be a bad idea. And I think the public area is good, and I think we can come up with a locker system, believe it or not, for people who are homeless, so they can have a place that's safe that they don't have to worry about. I think we can have some shelter that's available. I think showers are important. I think having things that can help people in every way we can, I think going out of our way and looking together at ways to do it, having private and government support is tremendous. And looking at very compassionate people. And so the secret is working together, finding better ways to help our people, and I think it needs to be done on a regional basis. I think that I have friends in cities that are north of us who think that their solution is us. And I think it is, but they could come help with the solution. I think we need to do it on a regional basis. I think it wouldn't be bad, if you want to know the truth, if Renton offered to have a meeting with all the cities and say, "We have a problem together, and we ought to solve it together, and we'd love to set up a forum and chat about this and work out solutions." And I think that as we include the public and include wonderful people, we can come up with answers, because the problems are there, and the solutions the Lord will give us if we work together. Thank you.
Next is Beth Asher.
Oh, hi, Beth Asher, Renton. And I was going to talk a little bit more about Ryac, where I've been volunteering since it opened. But before I get into that, I thought I would give you a couple of ideas, and these are from California, strangely enough, and they were for the homeless. Howard made me think of it. They have a shower truck and a laundry truck. They're monster, you know, semi-sized things that come around. They're sponsored by commercial vendors, of course, who get the good publicity and the good feeling of helping people. So they troll up to wherever they're going to be parked at that particular time. And again, this could be done regionally. People can come up, they can shower, they can put their clothes in the washer, they can put their clothes in the dryer. It's, you know, for the homeless or extremely, extremely low income. And it's been really successful, and the vans kind of travel about their designated area. I suppose I could go and find out some of the workings of it. One of them is operating in an area where my sister lives. There's kind of like, as is typical for California, it's super high-end, and then bam, down in the valley, it's pathetically low income. So again, you'd have to, it'd be like any trailer, you've got the ways to deal with and all of that, but it was a kind of a cool idea. And it rotates through, I think, three counties. And so on to Ryac. So this has been really successful. It's been interesting how it grew. Well, the first night I volunteered, there were three kids. And now when I go in, kind of the joint is jumping. There are a lot of kids there. There are always kids on the basketball court. And by the way, that was great, that the city got up the new basketball hoops, because they've been in constant use since they went up. Kids are doing everything from just hanging out, because, you know, they're latchkey kids, to getting tutoring, because they need help with math. A couple of kids have asked for help with resumes for summer jobs. And if you get your homework turned in and, you know, keep up a certain grade average, you earn a backpack. I mean, they just, they just do a lot, and it's all neighborhood-oriented. But there are kids from farther away that do come. We have fosters, we have a couple families that are actually in shelters, and then we just have all the local neighborhood group. And Councilman Taylor asked a great question, which I thought their response was perfect. Yes, you can donate, and yes, you can volunteer. The hardest thing about keeping this place open is that most of the people, like myself, we all have day jobs. So we're working to provide for our families, and it's hard to find people that have enough hours to give. And so I know one of the things we are looking for is an intern. Hopefully, we can pay the intern, but it wouldn't hurt to have one who needs credits for college and would want to put in some time, you know, organizing, helping with programs, learning grant writing, because Debbie is really good at it. As was noted, she worked for Kent and is very, very good at what she does. So how can you help? It's just get the word out in your neighborhood associations, in all the groups you go to, Boy Scouts, anyplace you go. Or you might contact someone who might be interested in helping at-risk youth, because some of the kids that come, yes, they have a stable home. Other kids that come, not at all. It's an amazing breadth of, it's kind of an amazing slice of Renton, and it's a majority, I'd say right now, a majority of kids of color and new Americans that are coming, just to give you an idea. And then again, you know, just some of the, your average neighborhood middle-class kid. But the majority is children of color and new Americans who are just trying to find their way. So, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next is the consent agenda. We have four items for council consideration. Are there any items that councilor liked polled?
Can Mr. Mayor move the consent agenda be adopted as we head?
Second?
It's been moved by Mr. Person, seconded by Mr. Prince. The council concur with the consent agenda. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. I see no unfinished business, or does anybody have a committee report that I overlook? Okay, we'll move on. Well, we won't move on to resolutions and ordinances, because we don't have any of those either. So we'll move on to new business and start off with Mr. Person.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I have the committee of the whole to announce next Monday at 6:00 p.m., and the committee of the whole will meet in the council chambers. One topic, Capitol projects updated, and that'll be Mr. Zimmerman's follow-up swan song for us. Thank you.
He's a little nervous about the swan song. I'll take that personally.
That means he's going to get through it.
I see, okay. Mr. Prince?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, on Thursday, May 8th, at 3:00 o'clock, the Plan Development Committee will meet in the council conference room. Two items on the agenda. The 2015 comprehensive plan update, that's a briefing, and the docket 10 update trees discussion, also a briefing. That's all, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Ms. Brer?
Yes, the finance committee will meet next Monday, May 12th, from 5:00 to 6:00 p.m. We have five items that'll be in the council conference room. Vouchers, parking garage fee waiver requests, emerging issues in revenue streams, fee schedule amendment, and hire fleet manager as step D. That's all I have.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Pavoni?
No new business, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, Mr. Taylor?
No new business, Mr. Mayor.
Ms. Palmer?
Yes, the transportation committee will meet this Thursday, which is May 8th, at 4:00 in the council conference room. One item on the agenda, emerging issues, which will include Maple Valley Highway, fast traffic and signage concerns, origin and destination survey results, Lake Washington Boulevard traffic modeling analysis, King County Metro Transit Service changes for September 2014, and grant updates. And that's it.
Okay, thank you. Was there anybody who didn't get a chance to address the council? Come on forward and give your name for the record. City of residents, you have five minutes.
Well, first of all, I don't usually like to walk into a room. First of all, excuse me, my name is Leslie K. Hamada. I reside in the beautiful city of Covington, Washington. And again, starting out that I don't like to walk into a room until I sit around a room and kind of listen to what people are saying, get adrift of what's going on, because I can't come from outside and knowing limited information start to tell you what to do, not even knowing what you're doing and what you have planned. I came here to speak as a member of the executive board for Kent Hope, which is housed in the city of Kent. And Kent Hope is a conglomeration of 27 churches, valley cities, Catholic community services, CCS, and many, many more organizations. And we are tied into a partnership with Union Gospel Mission. We've been meeting for about five years addressing the homeless issues, and we finally formed a separate committee called Kent Hope. And later, we joined forces when UGM, not Union Gospel Mission, was looking to come to South King County to do issues. And we were a board of, executive board of faith-based people, but we also have worked with the homeless for over 10 years, one-on-one. We have a lot of experience. And we didn't particularly want to have the model exactly that Union Gospel Mission had used with proselytizing and all that, coming from faith-based people. But they were willing to take on a new model and try some new things, and our partnership grew. They are willing to bring in $1 million to build a building, and we brought in the expertise of community involvement, people who've worked with it, volunteers. And we formed Kent Hope, and we've now, in the process of this, over the several years of negotiating and stuff, we did open a day center in downtown Kent. It's for women and children. We started small, and we've had great success with that. We offer showers, we offer computers, we have a clothing bank, and we serve three meals a day. And it's all done by community money, no government money or anything like that. We are now trying to take that a step further to go to the Kent City Council, not asking for money, but a mandate that's funded. And under that funded mandate, we're offering to open a 24-hour shelter. We've had four places we've looked at. We've had negotiation with the Kent Chamber, we've had negotiations with the city council, and four of those, or three of those locations have not been favorable to the city of Kent or the business community. We've tried very hard to, you know, get that to work. We stepped back, we've communicated more, and now we have a fourth location, and we're very close to, hopefully, with their support, going ahead and purchasing that land, building a brand-new building for over $1 million, which would actually be an asset to that area. The stumbling block is, we all know there's a homeless problem. We all, it's already there before Kent Hope was there, probably from the beginning of time. But nobody wants to have it in their backyard. You know, they want to push that problem out. Well, what I'm recommending to you today, and it's just a recommendation, because I haven't had the privilege of studying what you're doing with your great human service dollars toward homelessness. It sounds like quite a large amount to be giving to the community. But I think instead of perhaps looking at, you know, coming in and getting rid of all the problem, is to activate even more so how you can partner with Kent, with Covington, with Auburn. It's a regional problem, homelessness. It's not going to go away. You can chase them from one city to the next city, so your statistics are better on the one-night count, but it's not going away. And the trick is to partner with your churches, your community for funding, and let those experts that actually have worked with these people run your program, and it will help in a lot of your problems. You're still going to have problems, and it will help with a lot of your camps, because whether you believe it or not, and somebody has said this statement, that people want to be homeless. If you've ever been out on a night here in Renton, when it was 32, it got down to 32 quite a bit, it's pretty dark cold. If you were out in the last couple nights, sleeping in a tent when it's pouring down rain, nobody in their right mind really wants to be homeless. You have to get them to a point through services that get them to, gradually get them to the point where they can even accept help a lot of times. There's so many issues. But I encourage you, if you have the budgets in the future, to be working with other cities, be working with your partners, to emphasize that, so you won't have to go out in these camps and clean up. That you will welcome the majority of those people into a place, which are our neighbors, into communities that are run by people that know how to run them. And I might add that the new poor and the new homeless is not what it used to be. It's people who used to have jobs, and all of a sudden, they were paying their bills, they were paying their electric bill, they were renting their households, and they've lost them. If anybody's looked at the statistics on the OSPI, children in the state of Washington who are listed as homeless, it's unbelievable in the state of such generosity that we can allow this to go on. This, to me, is a human service, just aggravation that we cannot accept. And I thank you for listening to me. I encourage you to continue doing all your good things. I'm not trying to come in here and be the expert from outside, but I've worked on these issues for a long time and worked with the people. And there are very better ways to solve it than going in and tearing down their camps. I know nobody wants to do that, even the police don't want to do that. Thank you very much.
We appreciate you coming by, and if you could leave us your contact information, because we do a lot of things in terms of regional planning, and this would be a good topic for us to have a discussion with, so...
We've actually had regional planning, South King County.
Yes, I know that.
And I've been on their boards, and I've worked with Karen, but we need to quit talking and a little more action.
That's why we have a Center for Hope downstairs in our building.
That's actually operated by Union Gospel Mission.
Yuri Williamson, I live in the Highlands. When I first heard about your volunteering for city programs, I got excited about it and got involved with it and everything else. But I think, like myself, a lot of people think that this is the citizens from outside of the city that are volunteering for this and getting involved in and finding out how much you folks and the folks that work in this building for the city period give of themselves. And I just want to make sure that that gets recognized, because I think there are a lot of people that think like myself, that it's just citizens like myself that aren't involved in doing it. But I'm finding out there's a tremendous amount of time within the city employees that's involved, and just give them a pat on the back also.
Nice.
Thank you very much, appreciate that. Moving on.
Thank you.
Okay, it's been moved by Mr. Person, seconded by Mr. Prince, and we adjourn. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We're adjourned.
To be really reasonable price...